Dave will not be with us tonight, so I'll be going through the agenda. The first topic on the agenda is preliminary financial report for fiscal year 2015-2016. The report has not been audited yet, so we're not ready to say it is our final report. Having said that, does anyone have any questions? And I'm going to butcher your last name. With us tonight is Michelle, who has her first name.
Ascolilla.
Ascolilla, who is our new accountant. Welcome, Michelle. Does anyone have any questions or comments about Michelle's report? Okay.
Sorry, you did. No, 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 I didn't.
Okay.
Good job.
Thank you very much. And the questions that were previously asked, and they asked a couple in the office, taken care of.
And can you say congratulations on your date of birth?
Yes. Congratulations on the date. Thank you for getting this done. I'm sorry, Michelle, this will be audited shortly?
Yes, the auditors will be here the week of November 14.
November 14. How long are they here for, Michelle?
They anticipate being in the office for three days.
Three days.
But they will do work before and after in their own offices.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And then will they put that also?
Yes. I'm not sure if they'll make the December meeting. I'm hoping they will. If not, it would be January. I'm not sure how long it usually takes them. Being a smaller village, it probably should be December.
Okay. Thank you. Do they normally come to the meeting?
They will give us a present paper with a synopsis.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, after Michelle finished off with the A U D report, the preliminary financial report on fiscal 2015-2016, she turned her attention to the financial report for the first four months of fiscal year 2016-2017, and provided us with a preliminary report on that. Does anyone have any questions of Michelle at this time?
I don't know if this highway street maintenance equipment seems to be -- I'm sorry, I should have asked you this previously.
What's the number?
Five one ten two hundred. It seems to be high for this time of year.
So that, the majority of that payment is for a new Bobcat, the first payment of the Bobcat that was purchased. Eleven thousand seven hundred of the twelve thousand that you see there. It's a Bobcat.
Does it all come, the Bobcat payment, does it all come out of that account or does it come?
No, it's split.
Between that account and water or sewer?
Water.
Water.
Now, this is one of those three-year payments, right? This is the end of the lease, end of the three-year payment. We picked up, we finished paying something and pick up the truck. I'm sorry, I should, I should, I know you asked us to ask these questions.
I'm not sure which year.
Previously.
I don't know if we've got one more year or not. We can look that up for you if you have.
Okay.
You never pay them, please.
Nice work, Michelle.
Thank you.
You don't need to stay with us anymore. If you'd like to come home.
Thank you.
Not you. No, you're not staying. You, you will come home too?
No, no, no. Thank you for all the explanations.
No problem.
To meet our last goal, I think.
If you have any questions to ask, or please feel free to email me, and I'll be well and happy to answer them.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is the parking committee recommendations for winter parking. Winter parking, as you may know, is normally available at the Boulevard, and the parking committee is recommending, in addition, parking, winter parking in front of Mayor's Park, the diagonal parking, the south side of New Street adjacent to the Boat Club entrance, overnight only parking at the municipal lot, that would be from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., and parking at the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue. So that was their recommendation. Do we have any discussion on this?
If a question at the Boat Club parking, so if we allow, whether parking there, the Boat Club members don't have, oh, no, they park on their lot.
I think so, yeah.
So that, those spaces are basically parking spaces.
Yep, yep.
So then, so are we going to put signs at these new places and winter parking allowed here, or something?
Well, we're going to be discussing a resolution on that. I don't know whether any of these areas, sorry, I know that, Steve, correct me on this, the Boulevard has signage for winter parking. As you come from your house.
Yeah, in the bus jail.
Yep, there is, there is signage there. I don't know if there's signage at Marion Avenue that's been previously designated as winter parking.
No, except by the, these.
By the garden apartments there. At the end of Marion Avenue where Dead Ends, where across is Benedict?
Oh.
Okay. In front of the garden apartments, that, that is the area that people were, in the past permitted to park overnight when there were situations where you had to get your car off the street. But I can certainly look into that if we need signage.
The village plows that, or that's run by the apartment?
I don't know the answer to that.
And it's also, it's also allowed on, on Ross, on Ross 5th Street.
We don't know that.
We don't know, but everybody seems to park there.
Park there.
And that belongs to the school, or that belongs to the physical school?
Yeah.
That's always been a place for people.
Yep, right.
They don't seem to have a problem with it, this has been going on.
I don't think Halden has ever indicated that it's a problem, but that's not part of our, right, not for us to say.
We won't declare it. They wouldn't be using that in the winter anyway, because they don't use any of the fields.
No. And in fact, the school does plow there every once in a while. When enough cars get out of the way, they'll come through.
Yeah, they come through.
Yep. So, no, I have two questions about the general recommendations that are being made, which for winter parking, is signage required, and who plows Marion. So you have in your packages a legal notice, this is required by the village. The legal notice says, beginning November 15, 2016, and continuing November 15, 2017, seasonal parking restrictions will take effect pursuant to sections 126-15 and 126-36 of the Village Code. The Village Code specifies a different time period, and that's why the legal notice is important. I believe the Village Code says December 1st to March 31st. And the rest of the notice, which is what has been given before, is there's a call-in program where people are, it is recommended that people call into the phone number, which is 845-747-SNOW, S-N-O-W, to determine whether or not they have to remove their cars from the street because of a storm condition or a previous storm condition. The, what we've done here is identified in the second paragraph, the seasonal wall street parking on Kebala Avenue and the south side of the Boulevard. Signs will mark those designated areas. The question is, do we want to update this to include New Street?
I would say yes.
Yep, Mayor's Park?
Yes.
We have the municipal lot.
And the times on the municipal lot again?
It's from 9:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
And it's free.
And it's free. And the, Marion Avenue? Marion Avenue, thank you.
More information, better.
Okay. And we have also updated the legal notice, because this also includes not just winter parking, but also sidewalk clearing. So we've updated this to include the wording from the resolution that we passed previously about keeping sidewalks free of snow and ice within 18 hours at the end of the storm, and from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in front of commercial establishments and commercial parking lots. So do I have a motion to publish this updated winter parking legal notice?
And we updated, we'll add the Fair Street, New Street, Marion, and Municipal Parking Lot information?
Municipal Parking Lot, New Street, Mayor's Park, and Marion. Okay, so.
We made a motion to publish the legal notice as amended?
Okay. Any, any discussion on that? Anyone, a second?
A second?
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
No one votes? Excellent. And the next topic on the agenda is actually the parking on Marion Avenue. This resolution has been passed in, this resolution has been P-A-S-E-D in the P-A-S-T, just in case.
Watch out.
Enunciation is not.
Add a couple of extra words in.
Clear enough.
I'm ready for the Platte County spelling bee.
That's right.
Yes.
So this specifically deals with Marion Avenue, south of Benedict Road. It says, "Whereas the Village of Cold Spring has signed On Street Parking Regulations, blah, 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 blah. Whereas snow clearing activity in the vicinity of Marion Avenue and Benedict Road could be better conducted and coordinated with local residents if the village's On Street Parking Regulations are suspended on the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue, south of Benedict Road, to allow parked vehicles to remain thereon," which seems to imply that it will not be plowed. That's how I read that. "Now therefore be it resolved as follows: The Village Board of the Village of Cold Spring hereby suspends On Street Parking Regulation for the dead-end portion of Marion Avenue and south of Benedict Road until April 15, 2017, and a copy of this resolution shall be posted at Village Hall and provided to the Village Police Department forthwith." And so, would anyone like to make a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion?
Should it say from November 15 to April 15, or we're just going from now until April 15?
That's a good question. Can we approve it contingent upon Mary's?
Sure.
That's good.
A second, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. So this is a roll call vote. Francis Murphy?
Yes.
Marie Early, yes. Lynn Miller?
Yes.
Steve Valotto?
Yes.
And Mayor Morandi is absent. Next topic, new business. You may remember that the H D R B has received a Chippewa grant for updating of the standards, the 1999 design standards. They have crafted an agreement with Stephen Tilly, Architect, to, for Stephen Tilly to do that work. And what we have tonight for discussion is a rider to the letter of agreement, which is about five or six pages into, oh, you may actually have it right there. I have it, five or six pages. The rider will be incorporated into and made part of the letter of agreement. The rider supplements and modifies the letter of agreement. If the rider conflicts with the terms in the letter of agreement, the terms that this rider will control. Because I would just say the village has entered into a contract for grants with Chippewa. Chippewa's agreement to provide funding to the village. Chippewa's ready, willing, and able to complete the project pursuant to the terms contained in the Chippewa master contract. Whereas pursuant to that certain resolution adopted by the Village Board as of August 25th, 2015, copy of which is annexed here too, the village accepted the proposal submitted by Architect. And we will attach the resolution of the board from tonight to this rider. Whereas the Architect has submitted that certain letter of agreement dated as of the Thank you, Lynn. October, October 21st. Write on that. Yes, October 21st, 2016, wherein the services to be performed by Architect are detailed. Now therefore, master contract incorporated herein, the Architect acknowledges having read the master contract, the parties agree that the letter of agreement shall be subject and subordinate to the master contract. If for any reason, the master contract shall terminate prior to the termination of the letter of agreement, the letter of agreement shall thereupon be terminated, and the village shall not be liable to the Architect for the cost of services performed after such termination. The terms, covenants, and conditions of the master contract are incorporated in the letter of agreement by reference. Hold harmless, Architect shall enmity and defend, and hold harmless the village and Chippewa from any and against all claims, losses, damages, expenses, and liability, including without limitation reasonable attorney's fees, which may be asserted against village or Chippewa, which village or Chippewa may be forced to pay out, become liable. All notices, communications, all notices and communications on the letter of agreement shall be made and sent to Stephen Tilly, who provides his mailing address, with a copy to First Catania, Mayan, Milligram, and Rider. Termination for cause of Architect's bills to comply. The village may provide written notification to Architect of its breach and set a specific amount of time to cure said breach, not to exceed 60 days. Should Architect fail to cure said breach, the village shall be entitled to unilaterally terminate the letter of agreement. If the letter of agreement is terminated for cause, Architect shall be entitled to payment only for services properly performed, as determined by the village at their sole discretion, and further shall be liable to the village for any loss or damages sustained by reason of Architect's culpable conduct or failure to perform its obligations under the master contract or this agreement. Non-assignment clause, this agreement may not be assigned to anyone. Records, Architect shall establish and maintain complete and accurate books, records, documents, accounts, and other evidence directly pertinent to Architect's performance of services. No contractual relationship between Architect and Chippewa. It is expressly understood and agreed that nothing contained herein or in the RFP or in the letter of agreement shall create any contractual relationship between Architect and Chippewa. Non-pollution, Architect hereby warrants and represents if this agreement has not been solicited or secured directly or indirectly in a manner contrary to the laws of the State of New York. Use of village documents during the period of time that this agreement is in effect, any documents provided to Architect by the village shall remain the property of the village and shall be returned to the village upon request of the village, or in any event at the time such items are not necessary to complete the services. Architect shall maintain the confidentiality of such documents. Architect shall only use village documents of purpose of contemplation in this agreement and for no other purposes whatsoever. Entire agreement, this, this agreement and the attachments here too completely express the full agreement between the village and Architect. No waiver, no waiver of any term or condition of this agreement by any party shall be valid unless set forth in writing, signed by the parties thereto. Counterparts, this agreement shall be executed in any number of counterparts, including facts or scanned copies, each of which shall be an original, but all of which together shall constitute one instrument. So, does anyone have any questions about the resolution, sorry, the rider or the letter of agreement?
Do we have anything running from H D R B saying that they agree with any of this?
Oh, I, there have been a series of emails from Al's, Al's, Al and Kathleen, strongly recommended the village sign us as quickly as possible, because the Chippewa grant had a time, is time down, and we don't want to take up more time than necessary.
Does the, does the grant cover the entire, I think it did originally?
I thought it covered all of Stephen Tilly's work.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't cover all of that which, I don't believe it covers all of that which the H D R B wishes to accomplish. I think there are some additional things. And this is just the standards, it's not the design guidelines.
This is going to the letter, do we complete it in 12 months from when we start, when we sign it?
I think actually the clock is ticking for early.
Yes, okay. And the total of $14,200, I see in the letter?
That's what I read.
Yeah.
Sounds good. So, would someone like to make a motion to approve Dave's signing of the rider? When he returns, I'll make a motion.
Excuse me. You disclosed this as a discussion item under new business. This has not been posted, it's not part of your agenda, and it hasn't been, 72 hours notice, and this is a special meeting, you can't vote.
It is part of our agenda.
It's under new business. It's not, it hasn't been posted. It's not on the website, it's not on the notice board, it's not as a resolution.
Your, your concern is moving. So, the, the signature would not occur until Monday at the earliest. So Fran, you make a motion to approve Dave's signature? A second from anyone?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No, none opposed, very good. And then next is resolution, oh, there's a water main break in Nelsonville. To fix the water main break, it requires permission from the D O T to open up 301. And so what we have here is a secret negative deck on the emergency repair, identifying this as an unlisted action. You have the short E A F form. So the resolution tonight is, whereas the Village Board has considered a project to make emergency repairs to the water main on Route 301 at 252 Main Street, the village was directed by the New York State D O T to make application for a state street opening permit on Route 301, as the Village of Cold Spring is the owner of the water main, whereas this is an action subject to secret, and the Village Board is lead agency, and whereas the Village Board has close to be prepared and has beforeed an E A F and has identified the action as an unlisted action, now therefore be it resolved as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign the E A F, and that after due consideration of all facts and circumstances in this matter, the Village Board as lead agency does hereby adopt the annexed negative deck. I'm going to ask that we amend this. I don't know that we can wait until, for this, until Dave returns. So can we amend this to say either the mayor or the deputy mayor is authorized to sign the E A F?
Okay.
Okay.
When did the, when did the break occur?
I don't know. I, I don't know. I'm assuming it was before today. Okay. So a motion for the amended resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Lynn. Discussion? A second?
A second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, none opposed. Correspondence?
Sorry, hurry.
Yes.
That's a, a little.
Oh, thank you, Sandy. Roll call vote. Lynn Miller?
Aye.
Marie Early, yes. Rand Murphy?
Yes.
Steve Valotto?
Yes.
And Dave Morandi, absent. Okay, correspondence. This is to the mayor of O'Shore. "I own the building at 66 Main Street and wish to purchase the stoop adjacent to the building bordering on the Village on sidewalk. Please notify me as soon as you have established a procedure and fee structure for owner purchases of such property. Thank you for your consideration. Gail greet Hannah." I believe that Gail has been told by Mary that these questions will be taken up at some future point in time when we establish a policy for sale of such property. Also in your package, a letter from Ethan Timm, Mayor Morandi and trustee Early. "I've had the great pleasure of serving on the Code Update Committee since about July 2015. I'm happy to been, have been able to contribute in some way to the progress of code revisions. As we know, we recently welcomed our second child into the family. With that and additional professional obligations, I feel that I will no longer be able to devote adequate time to serving on the Cold Springs Code Update Committee. I do not want to leave the committee understaffed, so I'm willing to serve on the C U C until a suitable replacement can be found until November 30th at the latest. I will also help with transitioning any materials and technological items, such as the Google Docs that I've created in order for the committee to continue effectively. Thanks again for your trust and the opportunity to serve the community. Ethan Timm." Mary will post a notice seeking candidates for the position. That's the correspondence. Okay, minutes. The minutes for tonight's review and approval are the minutes from October 4th, 2016. Any comments? This, I should point out that this set of minutes was originally seven pages in length, and was cut down to two pages, under protest. No comments. Motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Fran. Discussion? Second?
Second.
Thank you, Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Approval of bills?
I am not through them yet.
Okay, so we can't put them in?
But can we wait till next week?
I think she's got to, I think she's got to get some checks out.
We'll take a recess.
We'll take.
Yeah. I'm almost, I'm almost through them, I'm just not finished.
Maybe 10 minutes?
That sounds good.
Can we just make a, discuss one thing before we recess?
Yes.
Just as a note, I spoke with Chris Hyatt today. He will be doing leaf and yard pickup on Thursday, November 3rd. Now, this is a change they used to do on Wednesday, we will be doing it Thursday, November 3rd. So please put out debris, leaves bagged, and, you know, wood tied on Wednesday night, November 2nd. He will do it again, or the Highway Committee will do it again on Thursday, November 17th. So those are two dates for yard pickup, and they're posted on Facebook. Another thing is that there will be garbage pickup on Election Day, November 8th. And then he, they have canceled, they may bring this later. There'll be no recycle on Veterans Day, November 11th, and no recycle on the Friday after November 25th. And all these dates have been posted on Facebook.
Great, Fran, thank you. Is that a change? Is that a change on Wednesday to Thursday?
Wednesday to Thursday, and, and he did explain to me, but I apologize, we, we talked about a lot of things and there was a reason why it was better for the highway to combine, to combine that with something else that they do on Thursday so they won't lose.
Great. Okay, so let's take a ten-minute recess and we'll come back to do approval of bills and comments. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve Bill's batch number three seven eight eight on the amount of forty-two thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-three cents. Any discussion? Second?
A second.
Lynn, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No one opposed? Okay. And with that, we come to the end of the agenda topics. Any comments from party?
Couple of comments. Uh, first, there's one year left on the Bobcat lease.
Yes.
To check on.
Yeah.
And the south side of Marion is, that's Donnie Yeto Tilly's property, so he, he plows that.
Oh, okay.
So, that's part of his lease arrangement with the tenants in the garden complex.
Okay.
And the final point is on the resolution, the, that you voted on this evening, amendment to the rider to the HDRB contract.
Yes.
Again, you put the village at risk because that was not a legal vote. It's a basic violation of the open meeting law.
Okay.
You have to post three days prior unless it's an emergency or special meeting, in which case you have to post one day prior. You just don't do it on the fly, immediately.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then I-
Oh, I have something. Um, in reference to the fire company?
Oh, yeah.
This is department transportation. I ran all that information down. Took a long time. I was in Washington, I was in New York, I was back in Washington and then I ended up back in Albany again. On my phone. But, uh, they can install signs on their building, that's fine. They have to be red on white or black on white lettering.
Okay.
They have to be between five and seven feet above grade.
Okay.
And red is for buses, but they don't really want us to strike the pavement anyway at this point. But if we had to, we'd have to use the same color we use like out front for the police department.
Yellow.
Whatever that is.
Yellow.
Yellow, orange, I don't know. But that's it, so everything's-
Okay, good. Thank you for following up on that. And I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Fran. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Will.